I want to welcome everybody. We'll start with a prayer for Steve Ayers from Lifeline Connect Church and then the pledge.
Well, again, we just thank you that we can serve the village. In order to continue to pray for the men and women that do just that, I pray that you give them wisdom and guides. I pray for the guys and the gals that are out in the streets and our officers, firemen, that you give them safety, continue to protect them. And Lord, let our, let our village be a light, let our village be able to serve you. In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. Village allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where justice stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remind everybody to turn off your phones if you were at least airport mode. Steve, do you have a friend you'd like to introduce?
Yeah, so I'd just like to have Jeff Gerhardt come on up. He put his letter and pen in for the city council space that we have here at the first of the year. I'll let Jeff tell, tell all about himself.
Yeah, I'm Jeff Gerhardt. I've been here in Village Hicksville for about nine years. Moved here in 2014. Grew up in Angola. I'm a plant manager at Martin Stockton here up in Mount Pillar. And just one of the things that really drew me to this community, because when we moved, we lived in Texas and we moved up here in 2014 from Texas. I've been down in the DFW area for about eight years. And one of the things that really drew me to this community was, A, the schools being top notch. We were looking between Angola, Bryan, Hicksville, and the schools being just the quality, the caliber of the schools. And I know Mike knows my daughter Chloe and everything there that worked over at the Tribune. But just the quality of the schools, education and everything there was a big deal for us with the young family. But then also this town, being up in Mount Pillar, the vibrancy of this town was a big deal. You go down our downtown strip and everything here, it's definitely rare compared to a lot of the small towns the similar sizes. And I think some of that stuff there and the proximity of Fort Wayne and just all the, all the things that this city brings to us, I think is a big deal. Especially as, as things change in our society and everything here over these next few years. I just feel like I want to help be able to take Hicksville and continue that stuff that you guys have been doing for these many years to make this town a town that people want to come to, raise a family in. I just feel like I'm led to kind of be involved and help with some of those decisions. And running a factory, 100 employees, having to deal with a lot of that budgeting, I feel is a skill set that can help us as we got a lot of things in that we keep down the stream. So I just wanted to introduce myself. I put my intent in last week and everything, I just want to introduce myself.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Do we have roll call yet? Okay, roll call.
Mark?
Here.
Bassett?
Here.
Beverly?
Yes, ma'am.
Egley?
Here.
Clipper?
Here.
And we'll be here late.
Okay, yeah, before you, the December 4th regular council meeting minutes for your approval, any corrections? Make a motion to prevent, or second. Roll call.
Egley?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yeah, before you, the bills, any questions?
Me? Questions? Where do we have a set of scales at?
Set of scales?
Says we had Fred Beeler scale, inspect our scales, scales annual inspection, $338.40.
Waste water plant in the lab.
That small set, they charge that much to certify?
And they gotta be certified.
I need to get a scale certification. Okay, how about Selena's Community and More Hospital, $1,133.73 says for a CDL.
This was only $32, the rest of it was police department physical, which is always that much. Those are Alex Jackson.
That helps. Okay, that's how many was it struck me?
Any other questions on the bills? Make a motion to pay the bills. Second. One second. Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Clipper?
Stay.
Egley?
Yes.
Okay, no minutes were submitted for the boards and commissions unless somebody's got anything to report. Okay, now tonight we'll have a public hearing at council chamber to hear any discussion, decision, rezone 301 Musa Argon from A1 agriculture, public use to B1 central business, B2 local business and B3 general business. So any input on that, questions?
I'm not close to it, but the original building there is 301 Musa Argon. And this property goes clear back and then clear up past the end of Cherry Lane, past through incorporating his garage and barn. And I noticed the post office job to put an address on it.
You're not rezoning by address though, you're rezoning by parcel. So on their application, whatever they want rezoned, they would have had to have had a drawing and a legal description for the piece that they're asked. So it's, it's, you can't just go off of the address.
Well, then that, then this leaves a lot of gray area in the way it's worded to tell us something. It says that you're doing that.
That's just the physical address of the property, I guess, which is true. Well, they're already, the 301 building, I presume, is already zoned properly.
Yeah, that was built in 68.
Yeah, right, right. So that doesn't need to be rezoned.
No, I just, I just wanted to make sure that every step they took was, so that we don't have gray area.
That's only the way it's described on the agenda, I guess, is what I would say.
So any comments on that? Go on the next step, be the next council meeting, right?
It has to be the local business. The statute says with, has to be approved within 20 days of the public hearing today. So it'll have to be done at the January 2nd meeting.
Okay.
And that should have the legal description attached to it.
Okay.
With the acreage and whatever's appropriate.
It's a big addition, what they're going to add. Council committee reports, there were none submitted, does anybody meet the last couple of weeks? Okay, administrators report?
I did submit projects that we had completed in 2023. Couple, there's still a couple outlined things with like the, you'll not see the water tower's not quite completed, but it's close. Also got a list of projects that we will be doing in 2024, if anyone has any questions on those.
What's going on, so anybody got any questions for Cory?
Did they, did you build the water tower?
AP is still, they came here, came here once with their design team to see what needed done. And then they were supposed to, they're supposed to reschedule to come back to hook it to the grid and set the meter and then we can start going.
But they, they didn't give you a timeline on that?
It was supposed to be last week and it came out Tuesday, design team did, they said they'd be out before the end of the week. And I hadn't made it back yet.
So sometime in January.
Hoping this week yet.
Okay.
Do you want to mention the grant that you got for the park?
I think that was in the last packet, like a lot.
Yeah, 1000 or something, remember?
21, you did actually get that?
Yeah.
You applied for 128, wasn't it?
That was through the total cost of signing, right? The, no. Okay.
That was nature, nature works.
Yeah. Okay.
And we submitted for $2,002,800, $2,000,202 for the Defiance Avenue project. That there, it opened, let's see, what was this year? November 28th, the applications were open, so we submitted an application for a little over $2 million, November 28th. The applications were closed January 17th. We're being told that the first quarter in 2024 is when this grant will be awarded. And like I said, that will all go towards the Defiance Avenue project. 600, we ended up using $650,000 in village cash to go towards that project.
Do we have a set of completed prints? Do we know exactly what we're going to do there yet?
I don't have the prints back, but yeah, we have, we went over all that, all those to show.
Does Water and Sewer have a chance to look at it? I haven't seen it, I'm on Water and Sewer. Have we sweetened out everything that we're done with the sewers that they said running behind the Batter Shell cabinets? And they're supposed to be staying under bus barns?
We're not, we're not doing the, we're not doing those laterals as part of this project. This is not included in this project.
So the prints that we could look at would really be handy.
The, the lateral for, for the Dan Glor residence and the lateral for the John Batter Shell cabinetry, I've already spoke with those guys. Glor's talking about tearing down the house. So if he does, all we have to do is make sure they dig it up and cap it and we're good there. I've spoke with John Batter Shell.
Let me interject, what about Trigent? I thought they were dumping raw into the ditch.
No, they go out, out front.
What we do? Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The Batter Shell Cabinetry, I met with John. We did do elevation, he's only got about six to eight inches of fall, so he doesn't have enough. Jonathan Yoder and Dalton, our water superintendent, he's installed those pump stations. So those two guys together are going to provide a number for John. I let John know that that lateral would, you know, be his responsibility to, to cover the cost and to get that over to the sanitary across 18. So that's why that, those two residents, those two addresses are not part of this project.
Okay, so, so basically everything from, from the south end of Charlie's that way, we're not, we're not touching nothing.
There is a, an old CSO line that we will cap off. That we, the village will.
That's the one that runs against the railroad? Not the railroad tile, but the one that's back behind Batter Shell?
It goes across in an angle across the front of his parking lot heading towards Pearl Street.
Gotcha.
We will take that out ourselves.
But if you could, sometime between now and the first week or so, let us take a look at the prints. Thank you.
Anything else, Cory?
Unless anybody has any questions on the projects for next year. You guys discussed it all, has anybody thought about what to do with the property there behind the library, it was the towers down? I have not had any discussion.
Not a very big chunk.
It's not, but it's no, it's property.
Yep. And it's landlocked, right?
There you go, a good location for one.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for Cory? Okay, thank you. I'm going to skip on the solicitor's report because we're waiting on a councilman to come.
I do have one, I think. A project that got started today was kind of an emergency deal, Chicago Avenue, at 320 to Chicago Avenue. There's a, Chicago Avenue's got a 15 inch old concrete sanitary line. And we had, the top half of it had collapsed for about, 15, one foot of it had collapsed. So a pretty big depression, so JDY excavating started on that project today. They're going to replace about 60 feet of it. That should be wrapped up tomorrow.
We don't do any of our own digging anymore.
There's no way we, we would get that done in two days.
Okay, any other questions for Cory? Thank you. Department has, please chief.
Don't really have much. We did a walkthrough of the Marx radio tower last.
Wednesday?
Thursday. That's Tuesday.
Last Tuesday? Okay, last Tuesday we did a walkthrough. It's ready to go, we're waiting on one company, is it Algaire?
Yes.
Waiting on one company, Algaire, to do their thing, whether it's fiber optic or microwave satellite stuff. Get their stuff done and then it could be any day now. So, and then I'll go live.
You don't need any additional training, right? You've kind of been, not know.
There's no additional training, but I, you know, just man, then flip the switch and.
Work better.
Test them, reuse and make sure they work. So, but, so we have a 911 board meeting tomorrow. I think that's probably to finalize all the paperwork and everything's been signed and everything, okay.
Amanda, our next time. Can the mayor recommend her?
Yeah, I guess we can do that if you want to. So we've discussed about mayor's clerk position, having a mayor's court clerk. And so the mayor and I decided, talked about having a mayor's court clerk and she was backup my administrative clerk. Probably looking at 20 hours per week as a part-time employee. So I would recommend Amanda Moniker for that position.
Moniker, is that her last name?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll recommend that we hire Amanda.
She was part of the interview, the top four that we had interviewed for admin.
I know we talked about a chief with adding an additional 10 hours, because right now the mayor's clerk kind of handled about 10 hours per K4.
But she'll probably starting out, she's going to handle more than that because she's going to have to train.
Right. And beginning with more hours of training and everything. And that's 20 hours per week, right? We're kind of basing that on.
Okay. I noticed that you started advertising for the K9 unit. Is that something, I guess, that has been discussed as far as insurance and all that goes? I mean, so they get the funding.
We had asked, finance had asked about what the cost was, was year two, three, four? Never seen any numbers or I've never seen anything.
So.
We talked about funding, getting donations to fund it upfront.
Right.
But before we move forward, we wanted to find out what it was going to, what it was going to cost per year afterwards.
I think it's going to be less than five grand a year, I, so.
We would ask if you could get some information from some of the other surrounding towns to have them, to find out what the cost is. I don't know if you had time to do any of that or.
No, I talked to Cheryl about it, so.
That's what we talked to last finance meeting was, I'm not saying we're against it, especially if it's being funded upfront, but I think we're all kind of curious what, what the costs were down the road.
So, yeah, I don't think it's going to be that expensive once it goes, once it goes, so.
Has that been discussed with insurance as well? What does that do? I mean, now that's, assuming there's actually.
I've already had discussion with.
Conrad?
Conrad. Might change a liability a little bit, but not much.
Yeah, it wasn't, wasn't very much.
Yeah.
I think a handy piece of information for finance to have hold of. What's it going to cost to keep it?
What, when you talk about this dog, what, what is this dog going to be trained in? I guess I never did ask you.
Lycotics, tracking, aggression.
Well, one of the new vehicles that you ordered, be able to accommodate a K9?
No, put it in probably one of the 2021 vehicles.
Is that included in the 30,000?
Yes, the whole startup cost is to outfit the car, the dog, the handler, all the equipment, everything. So.
The purpose of the dog for training? Training for the dog and chain, that'll cover all the training also?
Yes.
What kind of timeframe do you have on the getting money brought in?
I didn't set the timeframe because I've got two options for training, one's in probably the spring and one's in the fall.
I mean, but you're not, you're not going to let it hang out there, I mean, if it's not coming, money's not coming in, you're not just going to leave it to hang out there, right?
Yeah, I won't let it, it's, it looks like nobody's going to donate or we're not going to meet the goal, so.
And then you'll keep it, somehow you'll be able to give the money back?
Yes.
From, if you keep it in a bank account or something, not interest-bearing account or something?
Yeah, Cheryl's, it'll be a fund that goes into, so.
Give her dollar basis.
Okay, yeah, any questions about the dog on the table is my recommendation.
I just had one other question about the, the young lady that would take that position with your budgeting and everything. I know we have mayor's court budgeted for that kind of thing, the additional hours, because it was probably in our primary budget with the police department.
Right. With an extra part-time person, so is that noted? That's a Cheryl question, I think, with the money and how that breaks up with their department. You're okay with it?
Yeah.
I'll make, I'll motion for the recommendation. Second. Roll call.
As for the girl?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yeah.
Bassett?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Anything else, chief? If I got any questions, more questions for you? Okay, thanks.
All right.
Okay. Bruce?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nope, I don't have any.
Anybody got any questions for the chief?
I do have a question. In terms of the, I guess, the questionable outlook of our local hospital, do you have plans in the instance that the unfortunate entity closes? How does that affect you and your staff?
It's going to affect the bottom line of the dollars it's going to take. I mean, that's, that's something we can't go around. I've got a small hit of a plan started right now, but I haven't finished it off because I'm kind of waiting. Because we still have 90 days after that, so.
Hopefully.
Until it, until the 90 days come along, I don't want to spring anything in, in getting anybody's hopes up or anything like that or.
Do you anticipate having to bring on additional staff to cover?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's no doubt about it, we're going to have to have an additional staff members. There's, there's just no doubt about it because if we're having to go to Auburn, Fort Wayne, Defiance, Bryan, Paulding, we are going to need to on-call people that's going to be able to man the second squad that we have. There's no doubt about it. Is it a reliable unit and is it equipped and ready to do those lawn hauls? It could, not our second squad, but our, our mainline squad would. But if your mainline squad's out with somebody and somebody else calls in and you have to take that one, will it? It should, it should. I don't want to ride in a should. And I agree with you, Ron. I have heart attack, I want to, yeah, we're going. Yeah, we're going.
I guess that's part of my question about are we prepared or being proactive?
Yeah, we're, we're prepared for it. Right now, even if we have a second call and the first squad's out, I'm confident it'll go. But you're going to go to Hicksville. Yeah, I'm going to Hicksville with them now. I, I don't think you should wait and see what happens. I think you should put a plan together right now because, just because. Just because, okay.
Well, I think that would be my question too, because if I recall, we pulled some things out of the old squadron to move into the, the new, the new ambulance. And I guess if there's long lead items or anything like that, I guess that would be my concern.
Yeah, I, I've been told that the air conditioner in the second squad doesn't work as well as it should. That's nothing but sending it back out, get it repaired, get somebody to look at it, but it's been already looked at twice, I've been told. And they still can't fix it, so I have no idea why. You probably don't have one of them fancy cocks in that one either, do you? Ah, no. I mean, we can. I just, I bring it up because I know you're going to want it. Yeah, and it's, it's, it's an item that I really don't want to tackle yet, but I'm going to have to.
I think you're going to look at serious inquiries into having paramedics if that closes.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And, and not just one or two, you're going to, one or two people, you're going to have to have five or six, plus what you've already got.
And buying a new squad.
Yeah, and, yeah, and putting in a new squad order again. Glor Levis?
Yeah.
Glor Levis?
Couple of year old one. It's going to affect the police department also, if they close and we have someone in crisis and it's in a need, you know, that's where we go. And sometimes we have to stay with them and they'll evaluate or everything. That's going to be a whole different, we'll go on to Defiance. You know, and I don't know that their security will take over, because they have their own security now from Medica. I don't know if they'll stay with them or if we're going to stay with them. So that could create.
Manpower shortage?
I can tell you the city usually stays with their people when they're there.
Do they?
Not our security. Yeah.
So you're going to be short manpower, or your units out of town.
I mean, we had two days in a row last week, you know, we were at the hospital.
Get that dog and see if it's at the hospital.
I think those are things that need to be, that's one area, reactive, proactive, then reactive.
And I agree, don't get me wrong, I didn't want to jump onto it. I've got a small plan, but it's not, not intensive, but I gotta go with the chief and talk about those things also. Yeah, you and, you and the chief get together and chief things up, because I really think the storm's coming. Yeah, I, I truly believe, and, and if we do, if we do paramedics, I'd like to see that a fireman be brought on as a full-time paramedic. That way he's on call, he's on station also for coverage, however you do it.
Well, obviously, I won't be part of those conversations at the beginning of the year, but you're talking about some dollars.
Big dollars, yeah.
And the levy dollars don't come in until March, so.
And we did, we, the voters passed that levy for us, so we're going to take that money, we're going to spend it in the right places at the right time. Not just frivolously just throw it out there. But that money was appropriated and passed on a levy for what was going on at the time. Time. It wasn't the storm. Yeah. And. Yeah, the storm's not here yet. Yeah, so.
I know the, you know, mayor elect, we've had our discussions about EMRs and my officers becoming EMRs. Problem with that is, is what is that, six to eight week training?
Yeah.
You know, trying to get them, get everybody trained and trying to cover shifts, like, it's going to be, it would be tough trying to do.
And again, nobody wants to volunteer, it's not a volunteer situation anymore.
That's why.
What do I get out of it? Pay, what, how much money do I get out of it? And that's the bottom line. We've got some rough roads ahead of us. Yeah. We need to start getting them ready now.
I've always said the police department usually, his, his staff is usually at the scene before the EMS even gets there. That's a big benefit to some of the patient care and, you know, citizen care that we've had. I've always thought, you know, if you guys were trained a little bit higher levels to handle some of the situations, to get them stabilized before the EMTs get there, it's been a factor. Anything to do to help to, you know, meet the needs of the health and safety of our community.
Yeah, like Ron said, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold on any of those plans, I would start them, start them now, especially for EMRs.
And I do agree.
And obviously figure out the cost associated with those things, because that, now that that was included in 2024's budget.
I don't want to put a plan in effect and let you guys look at it and okay it and all of a sudden, six months from now, changes. So we've got to be all ready for that too. So we know how to make changes, you just get it rolled up. Anything else?
Appreciate your work, Bruce.
Thanks, I appreciate that, Ron.
Okay, any other questions for the chief?
Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Val, park director, anybody for a little shutdown for the winter, winter ice? Any questions for Val? Got one out there. Yes?
I'd like to see a porta potty put there. There's people use that in wear time too. Porta potty?
I got a park.
Well, all your restrooms are closed, you've got kids that slide on the side hill sometimes. You've got people, maybe walks out there on the track and stuff. I walk through there, I'm an older guy, men have problems sometimes. Be nice to have at least one.
Cory, can you look into that?
I still was hard for them to clean them and pump them out when they're frozen.
Yeah.
That's a concern, that's why we've always pulled them out. That's a concern. That's why we've always pulled them out in wintertime, they're good too, so. Even the one that we have at the bus park for the bus drivers, because we don't have running water or anything, or we don't have water or sewer or anything there at the bus park.
They can't stream?
Has to stay indoors.
They can't put, they can't put ant freezing?
I don't know, you'd have to ask my grape.
I'll check, I'll make a call tomorrow.
Since you mentioned that, and, and we're going to have that park not tore up, the sewers running across? And, and I don't know what your long-term plan is out there at that school. I've heard some stories about a bus barn out there and stuff. Would you want to put a sewer into that building?
I'd like to get rid of that building.
Okay, never mind.
We've seen that.
Never mind.
Okay, have Corey check into that? Okay. Fiscal officer.
Hey, you have your fund status and cash summary reports. I put in November and December revolving loan report. If you notice, there are two in December that don't have a payment listed because one's first payment's January and their first payment's February. We have the November mayor's court report. We have a notice from the OML that in 2024, they're going to have new council seminars. It's a brand new thing. But there's no details, not till January. And also put in a quarterly newsletter from the Defiance County General Health District. Not for anything for us to do, it's just the information about what's been on the calendar.
Any questions for Cheryl? Okay. On the mayor's report, going to mention employees longevity, they get bonuses. Going to mention Tyler Blair, who's with the fire department, been here five years. Chris Taylor, police officer, part-time, five years. Mark Denning, been here five years. Mike Bailey Zoney, been here five years. Abby Franz, five years, EMT. John Elwood, fireman, five years. Travis Stratton, 10 years of fireman. Terry Ayers, police officer, part-time, 10 years. Greg Doctor, 10 years. Richard Evans, fireman, 25 years. And then last but not least, Troy Sargeant, been here 30 years. So, congratulations to the employees. They'll be getting longevity bonus paid in December. And then you have before you elected officials longevity. Troy, you've been here 18 years. This is your last meeting.
Yeah.
Tony, you got two years in. Charlie, three years. Taylor, four years. And here comes Charlie. Eric Bassett, seven years. Michael Bart, 14 years. Ron Beverly, 22 years. And myself, 25 years, so... Let's see. Another thing is the Christmas cruise through is still looking for volunteers and they'll be open until like Christmas Eve is their last. And, okay, Troy? You're up.
Okay. The only thing that I have is Resolution 2023-26, third reading by caption only. A resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Vernon Doggo Inc. For construction of the pool and pool house in Hicksville, Ohio.
I'll entertain a motion, then a second. I think I have motion. Second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Clipper?
No.
Egley?
No.
Bassett?
No.
Bart?
No.
Okay, you went down.
A lot of you may not realize it, but we just did the village a big favor.
Okay. I've got a few things to say, closing comments. As my four years of mayor and 20 years of serving on council comes to a close, I am thankful for the opportunities that this community has given me. I have truly enjoyed getting to serve and lead. We are blessed to have great employees and each of you and the council members make my job easy. The community is really blessed by many people and businesses who volunteer their time and resources for the good of everyone. This is a great community that I am very proud of. When I started as mayor, my goals were to communicate openly with citizens and encourage growth with our business owners and industrial partners. I hope to develop housing opportunities in our community and to continue to expand our parks. I'm hoping the progress we've made in these areas continues to give growth and opportunities to our citizens. As of right now, we have four existing industries that are planning expansions with great potential for increased jobs. We also have a spec building that is going to be built hopefully at the industrial. I'm proud of the new water tower, or the new water will fields which are vital for our community and the new water tower, which are the results of a lot of work in writing and receiving grants. Our community has really stepped up in our parks with the improved ball diamonds, the walking trail, and the splash pad and, well, hopefully pool in the future. What great additions. One highlight for me was getting to speak to students at our school about local government. I have also really enjoyed getting to serve on the Defiance Community Improvement Corporation as we've worked on community growth projects. Thanks to the village, or thanks voters of Hicksville for giving me these opportunities. Thank you for support and friendships. I am thankful for getting to serve such an outstanding community. So, next we'll have...
Thank you, Ron.
Mayor's last meeting, thank you for serving. And Troy, 18 years, thank you.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda is Mary May. Julie, you come up, please. Can I say something real quick, Rod? You, 25 years, that's a long time. Yes. You've seen a lot of change, you've seen a lot of growth, you've seen diversity, you've seen a lot of positives going on in this community. I'm proud of Hicksville, I'm proud of your job you've done in council as a mayor. I can't thank you enough to be a mentor to me.
I've enjoyed it, it's, but it's time to step down.
But you've done a terrific job, thank you for all you did as a service to the community.
You'll continue on what's been started, so...
Julie, you want to come up and be part of this ceremony?
Here, at least come with me too.
Senator?
Yeah.
Yes, could you want to interview? Hi, Julie.
This is my daughter Caroline.
Hi Caroline, hi Julie. Would one of you girls want to hold the American flag? No. Why are you so anti-American?
I got my brother Jonathan and wife Lisa, there are triplets over here, the kids, Taylor, Madison, and Jackson. My mom's here tonight, Nick and Paige, Nick, Paige, thank you for coming. So, you hold the bike, put your left hand on the bike. Yes, okay. I, Michael G. Bart. I, Michael G. Bart. Do hereby solemnly swear. Do hereby solemnly swear. That I shall support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. In the state of Ohio. In the state of Ohio. In the ordinances of the village of Hicksville. In the ordinances of the village of Hicksville. I shall not be influenced. I shall not be influenced. By any consideration. For any consideration. Except that of merit. Except that of merit. And fitness in the appointment or discharge of employees. And fitness and discharge of employees. I shall not make. I shall not make. Or authorize. Or authorize. The expenditure of public money. The expenditure of public money. Except for the consideration. Except for the consideration. And efficient service to the village. And the efficient service to the village. I shall faithfully. I shall faithfully. Honestly. Honestly. And partially discharge. And partially discharge. The duties of mayor for the village of Hicksville. The duties of mayor for the village of Hicksville. Defiance County, Ohio. Defiance County, Ohio. For the term beginning January 1st, 2024. For the term beginning January 1st, 2024. And ending December 31st, 2027. And ending December 31st, 2027. To which I have been elected. To which I have been elected. So help me God. So help me God. Very good, thank you, mayor. Congratulations, yeah. Okay, anything else needs to be brought before this council?
Quick question, how many candidates do you have for the open?
Four or five.
Yeah, there's, there's five now.
These are more than that, it's quite a few. We're going to have a lot of choices, which is...
Second, it's about the second.
When is that meeting? Yeah, the unofficial meeting.
Okay, yeah, it's up to council to appoint in 30 days. If you don't do it, he does it. We're talking about the council, am I right?
No, I'm talking about the meeting you have before the regular meetings where you make sure that nobody collects points you to the council president.
That's the first meeting, January 11th.
I know you have one.
January 11th. Anything else needs to be brought before this council?
Oh, they will not make me council.
I, I will just make a statement on the pool because I'm sure it'll start spreading like crazy and everybody will make their own speculations. The main reason for me voting no on this, and I'm sure it is everybody, and that's why we delayed the decision, is the status of our current hospital. The translation of their income versus our general fund dollars is substantial. So, with a loss that big, I believe it's several hundred thousand dollars of general fund money. And that is a substantial amount of money that we're going to take a hit on. So, for us to sit here and say, let's go ahead and leverage our cash on top of taking a hit like that, I don't believe is a fiscally wise decision. And that's the reason for no at this point. I hope in the future it can get worked out, but I don't think right now is the time to do it. So, just a little explanation from my standpoint.
They mentioned at the hospital meeting to contact representatives? Because, you know, there's hope that they can stay open, but... They're going to try. So, but they're supposed to get it out there who, a form letter, tried to help to the state, so... I really hope they survive.
When's your next meeting, Ken? January 11?
Yeah, second.
11.
Oh, his meeting, okay, yeah, I thought you meant first council meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second, roll call.
Second. Murray?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Martin?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.